Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to today's meeting of Geddling Borough Council Planning Committee. My name is councillor John Trescott and I am Chair of the Planning Committee. First, I must give the official webcasting notice and remind you that the audio of this meeting is being live broadcast on the council's website and the video of the meeting will be published after the meeting on YouTube. Our previous Planning Committee meeting, YouTube, has attained a total of 91 hits so far. I'd like to introduce the officers from Geddling Borough Council who will be providing support during the meeting. These are Mike Avery, Assistant Director, Planning and Regeneration; Kevin Cartridge and Nigel Bryan, Principal Planning Officers; Sarah Pregon, Solicitor from our Legal Department; Alec Dudley, Service Manager, Democratic Services; and Kate Goodall, Democratic Services Officer and Clerk to the Committee.
Good evening.
A few preliminary notices because of the changes to normal procedure, because of course this is a virtual meeting. Will all members of the committee please ensure that their microphones are switched off or muted, as we call it now, when they are not required to speak and switched on or unmuted when they are called on to speak and they speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones? Will all councillors please try and limit their contributions to three minutes or less in order that everyone gets a fair chance to air their views? There will also be the following changes to the normal procedure. Firstly, under Apologies for Absence and Substitutions, the Clerk to the Committee will introduce all councillors who have registered their attendance as well as apologies and substitutions. At that point in the agenda, when I would normally ask for a proposal and seconded from the floor, to avoid confusion, I will propose each item on the agenda as Chair and councillor Paul Wilkinson will second as Vice Chair. This is in no way an indication of support or opposition to any proposal or application by either of us, but merely a means of expediting the proceedings. When it comes to that point on the agenda, when I would normally open up the meeting for contributions from the floor, instead, the Clerk of the Committee will ask councillors in alphabetical order to make their contributions, questions, et cetera. Please observe the three-minute rule. Similarly, when it comes to the vote at the end of the item, that will be conducted alphabetically as well. I hope you've all received your supplements to the main agenda papers, elevations, photos, planning applications, although these will be displayed on your screen at the appropriate time. Finally, there will be a short comfort break after item five on the agenda. And also, because of a... I normally take any other important items as the last item on the agenda, so that will... there'll be just a slight alteration that the Planning Delegation Panel sheets will now be item 15 on the agenda, future application 16, and then any other items which the Chair considers urgent as 17 and the final item. Okay, so we'll move to item one on the agenda, which is Apologies for Absence and Substitutions. Kate, if you would like to take over?
Yep, so apologies we've received from councillor Rosa Caneley and councillor Barbara Miller. And councillor Ron McCrossan is substituting this evening, so just take attendance now, please. So councillor Trescott?
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Here.
Councillor Adams?
Yeah.
Councillor Barnes?
Here.
Councillor Barnfather?
Here.
Councillor David Ellis?
Here.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
Here.
Councillor Elwood?
Here.
Councillor Hope?
Through.
Councillor McCrossan?
Here.
Councillor Lawrence?
Here.
Councillor Paling?
On the button here.
Councillor Pa?
Here.
Councillor Scoggy?
Here.
And councillor Wheeler?
Hello.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Second item on the agenda is to approve the correct record, the minutes of the meeting held on the 17th of June 2020, which you'll find on pages five to 32 of your agenda papers. Rather than go through the list alphabetically, if anyone doesn't approve, will they please speak up, otherwise we'll take them as read. Okay?
Chairman, if I may?
If I may? Yeah?
I wasn't at that meeting, John, is that recorded? Or will it be recorded?
Well, that will have been recorded in the minutes, yes.
But I can't approve or whatever, as it stands.
Well, that's correct, you can't.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Planning Committee protocol, which you'll find on pages 33 to 35, which I'm sure we've all read. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interest. I've got no general declarations to make, are there any individual ones? Nope, okay. We go on to item four on the agenda, which is Application 2019/1079, land adjacent to Clement Private Road, Woodborough. And we have a speaker, Andrew Prestwich. Is Andrew Prestwich with us? This is application for three dwellings.
Yes, Mr. Prestwich is in attendance, Chair.
Hi, Anne. And hello, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Prestwich, you've got three minutes and Kate, you could do the timing for me, I'd be much obliged.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I take it everyone can hear me and probably see me as well?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I can see you and hear you.
Thank you. I'm hearing an echo, I've just heard everything twice. I'll start, I'll start now.
Yes.
I've worked hard to produce a worthwhile group of three family homes for this site in Woodborough. The plan has been conceived in consultation with Mike Avery and Nigel Bryan at Geddling, together with a first-rate team of architects and also input from local residents. And I've just realised why it is that I can hear the echo, it's because I'm hearing this also, of course, back through the website. If I cut the website out, that will make it better, won't it? Does that make that better for you as well? There we go. So this plan has been conceived in consultation with Mike Avery and Nigel Bryan at Geddling, together with a first-rate team of architects and indeed input from local residents. I showed the original plans to the householders living immediately nearby, showed them individually, told them what was happening. They asked questions, which I answered, I invited them to revert to me if they wished. They know me, I live 200 yards away, none of them did in fact come back to me then. I realised from the committee report that there have been some letters of objection. Those letters of objection, or at least the listed objections, seem to me, if I may say so, to be misconceived and indeed wrong, and I suspect they'd have been put forward irrespective of the style of the proposed houses. I understand Nigel Bryan, some of the letters are from residents of Broadclose, that's getting on for 100 yards to the south of this site. They fear an increased flood risk, but our three houses are not going to have any impact on Broadclose at all. The three houses will have back gardens which are south facing, which will soak up some surface water, there is no possible flood risk from those houses to Broadclose. Private Road is a road which has, for 60 years at least, comprised a mix of contemporary and traditional houses, including some avant-garde designs from the 1960s. There's a very modern conversion immediately next door to our site, a house called Clement. That conversion is not yet finished, but is in the same style as our three proposed houses, red brick, render, large windows, including at the rear, a picture window which fills the wall and indeed goes right up to the top of the apex. The conversion of Clement is scarcely visible from the conservation area and the same will be true of our houses, which will have broader, the same height as Clement and exactly the same height as Windways on the other side of our site. In order to see Clement from the conservation area, one has to be standing on one particular part of the governor's field, opposite the end of Row Lane, and the reality is that in any meaningful terms, Clement and our houses will be invisible from totality of the conservation area. I gather that someone's written to say that we don't have a right of way along Private Road. My family have owned and used this land since before most of the houses on Private Road were built and we have a clear right of way in the title, it's for all purposes. People these days want to live in houses which let in a lot of light, they want open plan living, they want flexibility, and that's all provided. Thank you, can I... because of the volume earlier, and I had to make an adjustment, can I just say that the roof is particularly clever on these because it runs north to south and breaks up the roofline and helps enormously the house immediately up. I've sent in the written submission, setting out these points, and I trust that you'll be able to look at that if you need anything further. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know what's happened, but my screen has gone completely...
Mine had as well.
Mine too.
Kate, I'm seeing your email currently. I think you've shared your screen.
It's not my screen.
Oh. Oh, no, it's councillor Mary Sitchell.
I think it's councillor Lawrence. Yeah, if you can click your three buttons and... The share screen button in the middle, if you click that, it should take it off.
I didn't do anything.
I clicked the three buttons. Oh, where the hell did I... sorry. I don't know how that happened.
There we go. Back to normal.
Okay.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you very much. Mike, sorry, Mike Avery, do you want to add anything to this?
Thank you, Chairman. The application site forms part of a site allocated for 15 dwellings in the local planning document under policy LPD 70. A separate application has been made for a development of 11 dwellings, which is proposed to be accessed from Broadclose. This application is still pending consideration and will be referred to a subsequent meeting of the Planning Committee. Private Road is an area that is mixed in its form and has a wide range of dwellings upon it in terms of scale, materials and layout, with a number of dwellings individually designed. The design of the elevations and fenestration of the proposed dwellings are modern in appearance and would include a mixture of materials, including render, red brick, zinc and some timber cladding. While I accept that the design is a subjective matter, having regard to the mixed character of Private Road, in my opinion, the appearance of the development would respect the character of the area. Site is elevated and there are views from Main Street, which is within the Woodborough Conservation Area. As detailed in the report, the Conservation Officer notes that the design of the dwellings and their scale will be at odds with the settlement form and believes something more modest in scale and traditional would be preferable. The case officer raised these concerns with the applicant and they did not wish to make any amendments to the proposal. It is apparent that the application site is approximately 130 metres from the conservation area boundary, and whilst there are views from the conservation area, I don't agree that the development would have a detrimental impact upon its setting. Car parking provision is policy compliant and the Highways Authority has raised no objection to three additional dwellings taking an access from Private Road. Despite the proposed development falling below the threshold whereby planning obligations would usually be sought, it forms part of a wider allocated development site with similar ownerships and therefore applying proportionate planning obligations is considered to be acceptable. No contribution towards affordable housing is sought because a wider development would be less than 15 dwellings. An education contribution, £10,234, is sought towards secondary education. This equates to three fourteenths of the overall contribution of £47,750 for the wider development. A public transport contribution of £1,285 is sought towards improvement towards transport within the village in the form of raised curves. This equates to three fourteenths of £6,000. Public open space contribution of £17,854 comprising £12,576 towards play equipment within Woodborough and £5,278 towards future maintenance is required. Again, these figures equate to three fourteenths of the overall amount required for the wider site. These contributions sought are considered to be in full conformity with the local planning document and national policies and also the community infrastructure levy regulations. I recommend that permission is granted in accordance with the report. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. So there you have the proposal for planning for three detached residential properties on page 38. Well, I'm going to move, as Chair, I will officially move this.
And I will second it.
Thank you very much. So I will now open the debate and ask Kate to call on the councillors in alphabetical order for their comments or questions, please.
Thank you. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Kate, and thank you, Chair. Just, just one thing I really want to raise and just a question for Mr. Avery is around the planting plan after this obviously has been removed. I haven't come across a landscape plan anywhere. I note in section 4.2 of the application, it talks about, from Woodford Parish Council, talking about the planting of trees and the replacement of those trees being done by the developer. Can we have some confirmation on what that is and if that is, if it forms part of the actual application, please? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. So condition four of the recommendation requires details of both hard and soft landscaping works to be submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. So in answer to your question, that matter will be provided. The approach is that condition four would need to be discharged, so the applicant for planning permission would need to provide those details subsequently to the Borough Council, should the Planning Committee resolve to grant planning permission with the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Barnes?
No comment, supported.
Councillor Barnfather?
No, I'm happy with Mr. Avery, Mr. Prestwich's contribution, which has addressed any issues I may have had, thank you.
Councillor David Ellis?
Thank you, yeah, I'm happy that the buildings are appropriate and for the area and I'm pleased to see that there's a section 106 agreement in place, so I'm happy with it.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
I'm content with the recommendation, thank you, no further comment.
Councillor Elwood?
No comments to add at this stage.
Councillor Hope?
Yeah, I've got a question and you can probably answer it. Reading through the paperwork, I see that this is a site that can take up to 15 homes and if it did, it would have to offer some affordable housing. I note that Woodborough Parish Council make that as an observation, that affordable housing should be provided, but later on in the, in the paperwork, it's sort of a bit of a fudge. I'm not quite sure what is happening, but there's no intention of asking for section 106 towards affordable housing and there's no intention, as far as I can see, of asking for affordable housing. I mean, is this another way round, a developer not providing any affordable housing when clearly there's an opportunity to do it? And of course, 20% on 15 is five houses, nothing on 14 is no houses. You know, how do you explain that? Why are we allowing a site that could usefully and in the view of the parish council necessarily provide affordable housing is being allowed not to do that?
Thank you, councillor Hope, if I can come back to you and answer that question. So the affordable housing policy in the local planning document and supplementary planning document, that is only engaged when the development proposed, it's 15 or more dwellings. The aggregate level of dwellings proposed here, so the application before you this evening is for three dwellings, and as I outlined earlier on, we have a pending planning application for 11 dwellings, but there's no policy basis for requiring affordable housing, a contribution towards affordable housing or affordable housing to be provided on the application site.
But you do state quite clearly in the paperwork that this site is 0.75 hectares and quite able to support 15 houses. So are you saying then that because it's a small site and because the developers lock the house off, we're going to lose three houses that would be affordable in Woodborough? When the parish council is making it clear that affordable housing should be provided? It seems to me this is, again, manipulating the planning system in order to avoid the things that we want and I'm conscious that at the last scrutiny meeting, we were looking at 360 houses being built and falling short of our target of only 18 affordable social housing. On 360, 18 is not a proper target and yet we still fell short of it. Yet more and more I'm seeing that people, and I'm assuming that is Geddling Borough officers working with developers, because the chap at the beginning made it clear that this whole development was talked through with Nigel Bryan, the case officer, and it's a wonderful development based on their getting together. Essentially, the one thing it misses out is our commitment to provide affordable social housing and the site is big enough. Surely Mr. Bryan should have been arguing against the developer, saying, no, you need to build 15 houses of which three will be affordable, rather than 14 of which none will be affordable. That, that's my point and I worry about this in the planning process because I'm pretty sure at no point in coming to put this forward as a proposal, Woodborough Parish Council would come consulted in any way whatsoever. They were consulted after the plans were produced and sent out. And I, I think that the system that we're using doesn't take into account the requirements of communities or our requirements as councillors, because I feel very strongly that we should be building as many affordable and social houses as we can, but this Borough Council is not doing that.
Okay, if I could come back to you councillor Hope, in relation to the way in which the applications have been determined, what have been considered, as Mr. Prestwich said earlier on when he speaks, and Mr. Prestwich being the applicant for planning permission, there were meetings with the applicant, the policy positions of the council were quite clearly set out at these meetings in terms of, you know, the wider site is allocated for approximately 15 dwellings. It doesn't say that the site must be developed with 15 dwellings or the site shall be developed with no less than 15 dwellings, it refers to approximately 15 dwellings. Our affordable housing policy is only engaged at 15 or more dwellings. So, you know, the officers involved in relation, in this case, have clearly pointed out to the applicant for planning permission, our policy requirements, this application has to be considered and the subsequent application, which is still pending consideration, has to be considered on the basis of its merits, as in regard to our adopted planning policies. And in terms of the role of officers, you know, promoting affordable housing, you know, we absolutely do support the provision of affordable housing within the borough. So, you know, our policy position is that development of 15 dwellings or more should provide affordable housing.
Well, I'm going to accept that, I've got nothing against this development, but I just think that the whole way we work towards making provision has got to be looked at again because as it stands at the moment, we're just not getting anywhere near a viable target or a useful target for the community that we're supposed to serve. And it seems to be happening over and over and over again. So, you know, forgive me for thinking that there's been a little bit of whatsoever manipulation of the system to ensure that no affordable housing will be built here despite the support for it from the Woodborough Parish Council. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, councillor Hope.
Councillor Lawrence?
No questions or comments.
Councillor Paling?
Thank you. I sympathise with councillor Hope. I would have liked to have seen at least a contribution towards some affordable housing, but I recognise that that isn't possible under the current...
It bloody is.
...circumstances. However, I am really pleased that there is a 106 agreement being entered into. I haven't tried to get out of that and that is going to be very useful for us to support the services that we so greatly need in the area. I was also very pleased to hear from Mr. Prestwich that, I think he said he owns Private Road and so there won't be any problems of access for the new houses, because that did concern me a little bit, there might be some civil action coming up. Thank you.
Councillor Pa?
Thank you. Have you got me? You got me?
Yeah.
We can hear you, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I panicked a bit there. Yes, I listened to the debates that's been coming through, especially regarding social housing, but I'm quite happy to support the recommendation of granting planning permission. Thank you.
Councillor Scoggy?
No comment to make.
Councillor Wheeler?
No comments to make, but I have noticed the comments made by councillor Hope, thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Kate. Yeah, like councillor Paling, I've got a lot of sympathy with some of the points that councillor Hope has made, but at the end of the day, I don't think we can compel developers to, to build more homes than they intend to. Any concerns that I have had about these developments have been addressed by Mike Avery and Mr. Prestwich, so I'm minded to support.
Councillor McCrossan?
You're on mute.
You're on mute there.
No comments to make, but I do genuinely feel there are some important points made by councillor Hope there. Thank you.
And councillor Trescott? And councillor Truscott?
Thank you, Kate. Well, I think my, um, how can I put it? Antipathy to these, to these sorts of elaborate architectural styles for domestic dwellings is, is pretty well known. And these are reflected in the comments of the, of the planning officer in paragraph 7.5, page 42, where he says that traditional red brick dwellings would greater respect the character of the area. And the conservation officer in paragraph 710 on page 43, where he says something more modest in scale and traditional in material would be preferable. But I guess we are where we are and this is a small road sort of tucked away in the corner of a village. So, uh, you know, that being the case, I, I will indeed pass my vote in favour of this, of this application, which under other circumstances I might not have done.
Okay. And would anybody else like to come back? No? Okay, over to you then, Chair.
Okay. Well, the recommendation which you'll find on page 45 of your agenda papers, which is to grant planning permission subject to the, um, into the owner's entry into planning obligations and all the conditions listed below. So if Kate would like to go through the list of councillors and garner the vote.
Thank you. Councillor Adams?
Four.
Councillor Barnes?
Four.
Councillor Barnfather?
Four.
Councillor, uh, David Ellis, sorry.
Four, four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
Four.
Councillor Elwood?
Four.
Councillor Hope?
Four.
Councillor Lawrence?
Four.
Councillor Paling?
Four.
Councillor Parr?
Four.
Councillor Scroggy?
Four.
Councillor Wheeler?
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Four.
Councillor McCrossan?
Four.
And councillor Truscott?
Four.
Thank you, Chair. That was carried.
That was carried unanimously. Thank you all very much indeed. Uh, if we can carry on now to, um, item five on the agenda, which is application 2019/1186, land at the end of Linden Grove dwelling. Gedling, sorry. And I believe we have Helen Ashworth of Northern Trust here to, uh, to introduce this application. Are you here, Helen Ashworth? Oh, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Pleased to see you and, and hear from you. Um, okay. Now, you've got the, uh, land on Linden Grove Gedling and you've got three minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Helen Ashworth and I'm a planner with Northern Trust, the applicant for this application. We are pleased with the officer's recommendation to grant permission and agree with the officer's conclusion that the principle of development is acceptable. The site is located in the Gedling planning document and that there has been a material change in circumstance since the adoption of the local plan, given that the Gedling access road is now well under construction and has made significant progress. This means that the site has come forward prior to completion of the Gedling access road without severe adverse impact on the road network. This is reflected by support for the proposal from Nottingham County Council Highways. The application is supported by a comprehensive range of technical reports and assessments, including an ecology assessment, a detailed transit assessment, a heritage assessment, which concludes that there will be no harm to the setting of the grade two listed Gedling house, a flood risk assessment and drainage strategy, which confirm that flood risks to the development is low and would ensure no increase in flood risk elsewhere. The application is also supported by an indicative master plan, which shows how the site could be developed to deliver 120 dwellings and public open space with no adverse impact on neighbour amenity. Following the submission of the application, Northern Trust have worked proactively with officers to address feedback received from consultees and neighbours, including the submission of an amended access design, uh, demonstrating how the lay-by on Burton Road will be treated along with an updated travel plan, the provision of additional information on ground conditions and on how small areas of Japanese knotweed will be, within the site will be treated. Amendments to the site boundary in response to uncertainties around land ownership. As a result of this, in the comprehensive suite of technical documents submitted in support of the application, there are no technical or design related objections to the application with statutory consultees. The proposal would also deliver significant benefits, including quality and affordable housing at 20%. Open spaces, including a play area, ecological enhancement, a new production of cycle link on Burton Road and a comprehensive package of section 106 contributions towards local infrastructure, including secondary education, primary healthcare, Carlton Library and bus stop improvements. Therefore, to summarise, the site is sustainable and is allocated for development in the local plan. The approval of this allocated site will make an important contribution towards the supply of market and affordable housing in the borough, allowing development to progress in accordance with the development plan. There are no technical or design related objections from consultees. The site will deliver significant benefits, including delivery of housing, open spaces, a comprehensive package of section 106 obligations. Therefore, planning consent should be granted in accordance with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much indeed. Um, okay, Mike Avery, the assistant director, would you like to elaborate on this application?
Councillor Truscott, Mr. Bryan, principal planning officer, will be introducing this application. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can all hear me. Um, firstly, I just need to do a few updates in terms of the con- conditions that are before you in the report. And that's mainly linked to the application potentially coming forward in phases if members obviously minded to, to grant it. So, um, conditions in 12 and 13, it's just proposed to insert the phrase phase by phase. Um, condition 21 is just to insert within the relevant phase. And then with regard to condition three, references made to the design and access statement, we just want to add into that condition. The submission of the reserve matters shall also have regard to the design principles set out in the design and access statement. And then finally, um, condition seven, which relates to, um, driveways. It's just to clarify that, um, each drive should come forward at the time the dwelling is ready, as opposed to all drives. So there'd be a need to insert necessaries necessary to serve that dwelling. In all other respects, the conditions are intended to remain as drafted.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question? My conditions go up to number 20 and you mentioned 21 and 23. I'll look on page 64.
Seventeen, nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and you mentioned condition 21.
Apologies. And what's 21? Apologies, it was, uh, condition 20.
Oh, so, so what goes in 20?
Uh, within the relevant, uh, within the relevant phase.
All right. That's, that's, that sounded all right. It's just I couldn't see it on there. Thank you.
Do apologise. Um, so the application is submitted in outline form with only access committed for up to 120 dwellings and associated infrastructure. Access will be taken from Burton Road opposite a bus turning area. A lay-by to the front of Burton Road would also be impacted and shortened in length. The Highway Authority raised no objection to the vehicle access as designed with there being good visibility along Burton Road. Site is allocated for residential development under policy LPD 64 and is identified under policy H4 as being able to supply, um, in the region of 115 dwellings. With the site being allocated for residential development, there was presumption in favour of what is proposed. The scheme will also be full, full policy compliant in terms of contributions, will secure 20% affordable housing, financial contributions towards education, libraries, the primary care trust, bus stop improvements and toward public open space if required, along with the installation of a local equipped area of play. The polished consideration of particular note is that the application has been advertised as a departure to, to the development plan and that policy LPD 64 identifies that development should not deliver homes until such time as the gar is complete. However, having consulted the Highway Authority, it is noted that subject to a condition requiring the approval of a construction master plan, there is no objection to the application. It's also notable the construction of the gar is well underway and targeted for completion toward the end of next year. So it is possible the road will be complete before development commences. However, if not, any possible highway impacts could be mitigated by the conditions suggested by the Highway Authority, does not consider that this matter would justify refusal of planning permission. Uh, having regard to the fact the application is allocated for residential development, identified access to the site is acceptable and that is a full policy compliant scheme in terms of contributions. It's recommended the application be granted outline permission as outlined on pages 61 to 64 of the agenda and subject to alterations to the conditions as previously highlighted and subject to the signing of a section 106 legal agreement. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have the outline planning application for 120 dwellings that land at the end of Linden Grove, which you'll find on page 50 of your agenda papers. I will, uh, I will officially move this as chair.
And I'll second that.
Thank you very much. And I'll open the debate and ask Kate to call councillors in alphabetical order, please.
Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Kate, and thank you, Chair. Yeah, just, um, this is obviously in my, uh, my area. It's a couple of things I want to sort of say. First of all, really happy to see that we've got, um, the Highway Authority requesting contributions towards a bus stop provision. Um, and the 45,000s towards sustainable transport, something which I think will serve the development well. Um, and also as well subsequently, the money going, uh, to the, uh, local Westale surgery, Unity Surgery and Park House Medical Centre and Apple Tree to assist in looking after those places, uh, with those surgeries for the new, um, residents. And I noticed as well, the league, uh, sorry, the Leeds Local Flood Authority has not raised, um, an objection, um, which is, which is very good news. And I'm over the moon about that. Um, because we do have a bit of an issue with, with floodwater coming off those hills. So I'll, I'll, you know, I'm very hopeful that we won't, you know, won't see any additional runoff, uh, causing problems. And hopefully the, I believe it looks like there's some sort of pond off to the, uh, bottom of the, um, development which should assist in that. And also I understand they're in, uh, discussions with Seven Trent to organise the, any sort of foul water disposal as well, which, which is good. Um, just a small point, uh, if I may, um, the, uh, application site for outline is for 120 properties. I, I note in the, um, LPD 64, um, that this was actually suitable for the supply of 115 homes. I wonder why the disparity, uh, in that figure? If I could have some clarification on that, please.
Well, the 115s identified in the, the local plan, um, it's going up to 120 is the maximum that could be allowed. If for argument's sake, through the, the reserve matters application is submitted, if the design for 120 will be unacceptable because of issues to do with the, um, the character of the area, et cetera, then, you know, we may all then look to negotiate it down back to 115. But in effect, um, you know, the, the increase is relatively modest. And, um, we don't think it'd have any material impact on, on the design, but ultimately that will come through in terms of when the reserve matters application were to be submitted.
Councillor Adams, if I could just add, um, in addition to Mr. Bryan's comments, the local planning document is clear that the figures are approximate.
Okay. No, well, that, that, that answers that then. It was just, I just wanted to, you know, obviously we've, we've talked many times about overcrowding these sites and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm always conscious of that. And ensuring that the developments are suitable, um, suitable in size. And we're not adding additional properties, um, you know, not of a, of a quality of size. But as you say, obviously at the moment this is outlined and if that's approximate, then that, that answers that completely. Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you.
Councillor Barnes?
Move the recommendation, no comment.
Councillor Barnfather?
No questions, thank you.
Councillor David Ellis?
Uh, thank you. I'm, I'm happy to see this being brought forward. And in the light of the discussion on the previous item, I know that the applicant, uh, mentioned affordable housing. So we certainly can see that coming forward when it comes forward with the reserve matters. Thank you.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
Uh, no questions or comments. Thank you.
Councillor Elwood?
Uh, thank you. Yeah. Um, I just want some clarification, um, specifically on, uh, when and where, um, consultations are, uh, take place on, on developments with regards to parish councils. That I've been told that, uh, Burton Joyce Parish Council weren't, um, one of the consultees, which I can understand because it's, it's technically outside of the, uh, parish council. But it, it's very close. It's literally a stone's throw away from, uh, the parish area. And my recollection from previous, uh, applications in previous, uh, years is that the, the parish councils are consulted even if the development isn't actually in, you know, literally in the parish area. But I, I was just asking a little bit of clarification on when and where the, uh, the parishes are consulted on the, on these sorts of things.
In effect, we consult with all the, um, parish councils that it falls within, but there isn't one, you know, for this particular site. So in effect, I, I guess the, the impact on Stoke Barrow was considered to be relatively minimal. So we didn't go out to them, um, as, well, I guess we're not obliged under statute and I didn't think there'd be any significant impact on that, uh, on that parish.
If I could just add a further comment, Mr. Um, any parish council could make comment on, on any planning application. Um, so as Mr. Bryan said, you know, that there's a statutory requirement to consult, um, a parish council on any development within land within a particular parish. But that doesn't mean that a parish council, um, can't make, um, comments on a planning application, um, which is not within the extent of, um, you know, that, that particular parish.
Come on.
Councillor Hope?
Uh, not, no commentary. I, I think it's quite good. Yes, there is affordable housing. But only if we actually see it being built. You know, I do stress this. This is one of the problems. Um, and the, the, the second thing is, um, I'm always concerned when there is a flood risk. We, we put an awful lot of faith in the sud system. Let's hope it works.
Councillor Lawrence?
Switch on again.
You're, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It went on and off. Uh, I'm happy to support this. I, I know that obviously it's only an outline, uh, application. So I look forward to, uh, full planning application coming in, uh, with all the contributions of various authorities in place. And I'm happy, uh, that the site can stand a further five dwellings.
Councillor Paling?
No further comment.
Councillor Parr?
Yes, I'm happy to support the, uh, recommendation. I see it as a plus plus for the people that live within that, uh, conurbation. Uh, and the contributions that are being made are, are in my view first class. So, uh, look forward to, uh, the granting the planning permission that's required.
Councillor Scroggy?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm quite happy with the, uh, the outline planning application. The only, the one thing I would stress is I would hope that section of the gar is complete before any work is done. Um, because the amount of traffic that could go through there, um, could be quite uncomfortable for the residents living in Linden Grove and just on the edge of the Collet Loop Road. But I'm quite happy to support this.
Councillor Wheeler.
Happy to support the recommendations, it's nice to see that there's 24 units allocated as affordable housing. I'd just like to comment a few comments earlier about affordable, it'd be nice if we saw some developments coming forward that were all, all wholly social housing, so I look forward to that though, thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you Kate, yeah, I mean other than to say that I welcome the commitment to social housing, affordable housing, sorry, and the 106 and 106 agreement, other than that, no further comments.
Councillor McCrossan.
Yeah, fully support the application and again stressing the social housing built into the application, thank you.
And Councillor Truscott.
Yes, I fully support this, you know, it's part of the local planning document, there's extensive consultation on this matter back in, before the local planning document came out, and I think it's excellent that we're now, now seeing some movement on it, so I fully support this application.
Would anybody else like to come back? Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, the recommendation you'll find on page 61, grant planning permission subject to the conditions below, I'm afraid I can't go through all the alterations to the conditions because I wasn't supplied with the material beforehand, so I just hope people can remember what was said. Kate, would you like to take the vote?
Thank you. Councillor Adams.
Four.
Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Parr.
Four.
Councillor Scroggy.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
And Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you Chair, that was covered unanimously.
Thank you very much indeed. So if we can go on to item six on the agenda. Application 2020 stroke 0103, land north of Park Road, Calverton, which is a diversion of Calverton Footpath number 39.
Sorry to interrupt Chair, but didn't, wasn't it announced there'd be a break after item five?
You're absolutely correct, sorry.
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson, sorry everybody, thank you very much for reminding me, Councillor Wilkinson, there will indeed be a short break now.
Thank you.
How long?
Five minutes.
Okay. This is agenda item six, application of a 2020 stroke 0103, land north of Park Road, Calverton diversion of Calverton Footpath number 39 for 90 metres. Is there any, Nigel, do you want to say anything about this?
I've just got a couple of points just to, to raise that I'll need to go through, but I'll try to be brief. There is a minor error in the report and that the last sentence of paragraph 1.1, page 66, and the first sentence of paragraph 5.1, page 67, should be amended, the reference to section 2751A refers to it being the power to divert a footpath to be diverted, where an application for planning permission has been made, and if the application were granted, it will be necessary to authorise a diversion in order to enable the development to be carried out, rather than it being necessary to enable development to be carried out in accordance with a valid planning permission, as the RM reserve matters application still remains to be determined. With regards to current application, it is apparent that there's an outline permission was granted under reference 20180607 for the erection of 365 dwellings, and a reserve matters application for the erection of some 351 dwellings is currently under consideration by the council. The layout proposed would require a 90 metre diversion of the footpath to respect the layout as proposed, with the exception of a small section that would run along a conventional highway, the remainder would be adjacent to public open space. There is no overriding concern with the alteration proposed and the start and end points of the footpath would remain the same. As a result, it's recommended that members authorise the Director of Organisational Development and Democratic Services to make an order under section 2571A of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990, following the procedures as, as outlined in the recommendation to the bottom of page 68 of the committee report. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, well, the proposal is the diversion of Calverton Footpath number 39 for 90 metres, which you'll find on page 66, I will formally move that.
And I'll second it.
Thank you very much, I'll open the debate and Kate, will you call the councillors up in alphabetical order please?
Yes, Councillor Adams.
Yeah, nothing to add, thank you Kate.
Councillor Barnes.
Move the recommendation and support it, thank you.
Councillor Barnfather.
No comments, thank you.
Councillor David Ellis.
No comments, thank you.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
No comments, thank you.
Councillor Elwood.
No comments.
Councillor Hope.
No comment.
Councillor Lawrence.
No comment.
Councillor Paling.
No comments.
Councillor Parr.
You're on mute John.
Yes, no comment, thank you.
Councillor Scroggy.
No comment.
Councillor Truscott.
No comment.
Councillor Wheeler.
No comment, thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, no comment.
Councillor McCrossan.
No comment, thank you.
Would anybody like to come back? No, thank you.
Okay, well, the recommendation is on page 68, that members authorise the direction of Organisation Development and Democratic Services to make the order etc, etc. Kate, would you like to run through the list and take the vote?
Yes, Councillor Adams.
Four.
Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Come on Meredith.
Councillor Lawrence.
You're muted, Meredith.
Councillor Lawrence, are you there?
Kate, it looks like he's dropped off, so we can continue without him and try and get him back.
Thank you. Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Parr.
Four.
Councillor Scroggy.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
I am here, I am here, but my park keeps disappearing.
Okay, Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
I should say four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Okay, and Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, that was covered unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Now to go on to the next application, which is number 2020 stroke 0237, land south of Collic Loop Road, which is page 70 of your agenda papers, and Bruno Moore of Sainsbury's Supermarket, who was down to, to present this item, is not here, so I understand that Alec is going to read.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a letter from Bruno Moore, Town Planning Policy and Transport Manager for Sainsbury's Supermarkets Limited, and I'll just read it out to you. So we are pleased that our section 73 planning application has been recommended for approval by your officers, and we hope that you will also support the slightly revised plans. As you may be aware, planning permission was originally granted in 2014 for a Sainsbury's supermarket and petrol station alongside employment uses as part of the regeneration of the wider Collic site. Since the application was originally granted, retail has evolved and the amended scheme is designed to reflect these changes. Sainsbury's remain committed to investing in Collic. The new store will provide a full range of Sainsbury's own brand and branded food alongside our popular clothing and general merchandise offer. The proposed store also includes an Argos, which will bring great choice and value while providing a convenient shopping location for local residents. The proposal will also deliver a number of significant economic benefits. The investment provided by Sainsbury's will act as a catalyst for the regeneration of the wider site. The scheme will also create employment opportunities for local residents during construction and after store opening. In-store job opportunities will be full-time and part-time, all of them supported by Sainsbury's training programmes. The scheme will also deliver substantial benefits for the local community through our food donation, volunteering and local community and charity engagement programmes. Subject to planning permission being granted tonight, we hope to begin construction works by the end of this year and open the store in 2021. Investment and the creation of jobs are always important, but they are especially critical during this period of national economic uncertainty. We look forward to working with you to get the economy back on track. Thank you again for your support and we look forward to jointly progressing our plans for a new Sainsbury's in Collic.
Thank you very much. Mike, do you want to say anything, or is Nigel going to introduce this item? Mike, is anybody hearing me?
Mike, you're on mute there.
I do apologise, Councillor Truscott, yes, I would like to introduce this application.
Okay, thank you.
The application has been made to update, update the list of approved plans. A particular note is that the floor area of the building is reduced by 243 square metres as a result of operational changes since the grant of planning permission, given a greater emphasis on deliveries and internet shopping. The overall appearance of the building, particularly the front aspect, will not significantly alter, and the alterations proposed are largely back of house. An ecological appraisal has been submitted in support of the application to reflect the passage of time since the original application was determined some six years ago.
Six years.
Phase one habitat survey identifies that there will be a need to undertake additional surveys with regard to great crested noose, bats, reptiles and invertebrates. All of these detailed surveys have been submitted, save for the two remaining invertebrate surveys. The reports identify that no great crested noose or reptiles are found and that site is used for foraging of bats, but no suitable roosts were found on site. It is noted that Nottinghamshire Wildlife Trust remains their objection to the application on the ground that the two invertebrate surveys have not been completed in support of the current application. However, this has to be weighed against the fact that there is an extant planning permission in place that could be implemented, and any possible detrimental impacts upon protected species would need to be enforced under the legislation, such as the Wildlife and Countryside Act 1981. Conditions are however proposed to ensure that the additional surveys are undertaken. The travel plan and air quality planning obligations have now been discharged, all payments have been received by the County Council and the Borough Council. I therefore recommend that the recommendation is amended as follows. Grant planning permission subject to conditions outlined in the report. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, they have the proposal on page 70, since section 73 application etc, etc. I will formally move that.
And I'll second it.
Thank you very much, I'll open the debate and ask Kate to call councillors in alphabetical order please.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you Kate and thank you Chair, yeah, just, I'm just incredibly glad to see this here, I think we've, we've all been driving past that site thinking for a substantial amount of time, when is it going to happen, is it going to happen, when's it going to happen, is it going to happen, and finally, maybe it's going to happen, so I'm, I'll be glad to support the application, thank you.
Councillor Barnes.
Support the application and look forward to it being developed, thank you.
Councillor Barnfather.
No comments, thank you.
Councillor David Ellis.
As everybody else, it's good to see movement in the present, present climate, and I'm glad to hear that Sainsbury's remain committed to investing in Collic and Gedling, so I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Yes, thank you, I'm pleased to see this application and look forward to future development of the Collic site.
Councillor Elwood.
No addition, thank you.
Councillor Hope.
I, I remember this coming around the first time actually, and, and the major concern was the petrol filling station as I remember it. Assuming that everything is sorted out with regards to that, I've got no further things to add.
Councillor Lawrence.
Yes, well, obviously it's in my ward, it used to be in the former Netherfield and Collic ward, and I've got on my computer plans dated 18th of January 2011, a consultation on the 10th of February 2011, and then 2013, cutting from the Nottingham Post or the Eden Post as it was then probably, 1,000 jobs in store, planners clear the way for development. So it, I understand the problems at the moment, and I do accept the commitment of Sainsbury's, given the problems that we all face, but it is a great disappointment that it has taken nine years for this to come to fruition. I look forward, as the developers have said, for it to be opened in 2021, when I might be still young enough to go along there. Thank you, I, obviously I wholeheartedly support this application.
Councillor Paling.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm laughing at Meredith's comment about his age. I fully support this application, but like others, I was really worried that it was going to be a derelict site for many years to come. Unlike Councillor Lawrence, I'm in a way quite pleased that they didn't develop the site immediately, I think it was for the petrol tanks of the opposite, rather than the petrol station going to serve the, the site, because if they had built a large superstore, that might in itself have become derelict, sold on or whatever. So in a way, as long as we get on with it now, I'm really pleased that we are going to have a Sainsbury's Argos and a good development on the site, thank you.
Councillor Parr.
Yes, thank you, yes, a long time in getting to this stage, but I fully support the recommendation.
Councillor Scroggy.
I've got nothing to add.
Councillor Wheeler. Councillor Wheeler.
Henry.
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute, yeah, fully support the recommendation, thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you Kate, yeah, I've been overall very supportive, echoing many of the comments that have been said before, my only regret is that unfortunately the inclusion of the Argos part of the store, I think will almost certainly lead to a vacant unit on the next door Victoria Retail Park, because I don't think there's any way that they will maintain both, both an in-store and a separate Argos, Argos unit, but I was very supportive.
Councillor McCrossan.
Yes, fully supportive of the recommendation, thank you.
Councillor Truscott.
Yes, I fully support it and as everybody else says, I'm really pleased to be actually going ahead with it.
Would anybody else like to come back?
Yes please, with regard to the Argos, which is in the Netherfield Ward on the Victoria Retail Park, it was something that I briefly discussed with a representative from the developers, I think they probably rang. And I did ask them about Argos and they did say, whilst they obviously couldn't commit themselves, that there are examples of two retail parks being quite close together with Argos in both of them, but we'll have to see obviously. It would be a pity if there is a vacant unit on the Victoria Retail Park, but obviously I welcome Argos in my ward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Now, the recommendation is on page 77 of your agenda papers and it says that the application of the grant of permission subject to the conditions outlined below, etcetera, etcetera. So Kate, would you like to take the vote please?
Councillor Adams. Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Parr.
Four.
Councillor Squoggy.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, that was carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, that recommendation has been approved. Okay, on to agenda item eight, which is application number 2020 stroke 0227172 Lamley Lane Gedling. Mike, would you like to introduce this for us?
Yes, thank you, chairman. Further to the publication of the report, the applicant has provided the following summarised comments. There will be little visibility of the site from the surrounding area as the hedges along the boundary are high. Trees have been planted along the rear and northern boundary, which, once mature, will make the bungalow invisible in the landscape. It is considered that the dormer windows would improve the current roof lines and will blend into the existing tiles and would allow the occupiers to have more practical use of the internal space. The bungalow has been extended by 55%, but the original bungalow was very small and the loft space is not as large as it looks due to the roof angle and low ridge height. The existing front dormer window on the property was relocated during construction due to a ridgeline change. The garage at the property was constructed under permitted development. The committee should approve the application or allow further dialogue with the planning department as the concerns raised are unwarranted. So to summarise the report, the dwelling was granted, sorry, the extensions to the dwelling was granted planning permission in 2015 for substantial alterations and extensions which have now been implemented. Taking note from the case officer report in 2015, their calculations suggest that the overall floor space of the dwelling was proposed to be increased by 55%.
Would you repeat that?
Sorry, taking note from the case officer report in 2015, their calculations suggest that the overall floor space of the dwelling was proposed to be increased by 55%.
Thank you.
The existing plans submitted with the proposal suggest that the floor area at first floor is greater than what was approved in 2015. The 2015 plans show that only the central area within the roof space will be utilised as floor area. The plans submitted show that the existing floor area in situ is greater than 55%. This floor area will be retained as part of the proposed development and the addition of the dormer window units would increase the area of usable floor area within this first floor owing to the greater headroom afforded by the structures. The proposed plan suggests that an increase of 20 square metres of usable floor space within the first floor area over and above that shown on the approved 2015 plans. This will take the total increase to 74%, substantially over the 50% limit set by LPD policy 13 and as such cumulatively, the additions would not be considered proportionate to the original dwelling. Floor space calculations help to quantify the difference in size between the original building and the proposed addition, but consideration also needs to be given to the design of the proposal and whether it's scale, form, massing and layout resulting in a property which would have an acceptable impact upon the openness of the green belt. The proposed dormer windows will be readily visible from the public realm with clear views to some distance as you travel along Lamley Lane from the north. The three additional structures would add significant bulk to the building and increase its dominance within the countryside location. This, combined with the previous additions, would, in my view, be harmful to the openness of the green belt. Having regard to the application submission and the additional information provided by the applicant, I do not consider that there are any very special circumstances for allowing the development. Further to the publication of the report, it was identified that the application had not been advertised in the Nottingham Post as a departure from the development plan. The development has now been advertised in the press in order to comply with the Development Management Procedure Order 2015. I recommend that permission is refused in accordance with the report following the expiry of the statutory press notice, subject to no further material considerations being raised. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I missed the very last couple of sentences of that, I do apologise.
I'll repeat them.
Thank you.
Permission is refused in accordance with the report following the expiry of the statutory press notice, subject to no further material considerations being raised.
Okay, well, the proposal, which we find on page 84, is to replace existing roof lights with three dormer windows. So I will formally move that.
And I'll formally second it.
Okay, I'll open the debate and ask Kate to call councillors in alphabetical order.
Councillor Adams.
I have no comments to make, thank you.
Councillor Barnes.
Support the recommendation.
Councillor Barnfather.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Representing a similar area to where this application is cited, it's not the first time that we've seen applications which have been approved and are totally ignored by the applicant or the developer. Mr Avery actually highlighted the additional room at ground floor level deviation from the approved plans, porch of the front elevation deviation from the approved plans, front dormer window built in a different location deviation from the approved plans, additional floor space deviation from the approved plans. And the applicant's response on this occasion seems to be, well, that's fine because we'll just build a big hedge and we'll plant a tree to cover it up. We have planning rules for a reason, applications are considered, recommended and approved for a reason. You know, I am categorically in support of the officer's recommendation on this, this is just wilful ignoring of the planning rules and just another way to try and get around them.
Councillor David Ellis.
Thank you. I think I'm going to destroy the unanimity that we've had until now in the meeting. Maybe I can explain, well, the delegation panel asked this to come to committee after a lengthy discussion and I think Mr Avery's summarised the sorts of views we were taking, the balance we were striking. The key to my mind is in paragraph 7.8 and 7.10, whether replacing the roof lights has an unacceptable impact on the openness of the green belt. The report sets out the issues and strikes a balance against the development, but I can't personally see why replacing roof lights with dormer windows makes a significant difference to the openness of the green belt. You can see on the slides that were circulated, the views of the building and I personally can't see that it affects the openness of the green belt, so on this occasion I'll be voting against the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
All right, no comments at this time.
Councillor Elwood.
No additional comments, thank you.
Councillor Hope.
A couple of things really, I've listened to two previous comments, one outlining all of the things that in a previous planning application were not followed. I've actually built an extension on my house about 40 years ago and interestingly, throughout that building of the extension, I had officers from the local authority coming along and checking that things were done properly, you know, the foundations and I had to cover a drain and, yeah, various things and they kept checking and there was absolutely no chance that I could have put something in the wrong place or made it a yard longer because there was a bloke two weeks later who'd say, no, you can't put it there, take it up. What has happened to that? I mean, if somebody is putting in a planning application and then not following the planning application that he put in, yeah, the question is, yeah, whose fault is it? Is it his or is it ours because we're not doing the checks that we should? Secondly, I tend to agree with Mr Ellis. What the man is doing, as far as I can see, is changing a roof light into a dormer window which looks out over a large area of armour. And to that extent, I don't think he's right. And my question is, are we punishing him for stuff he did before that we should have checked on or are we looking at this application in a clear light? Equally though, you know, we have got a rule on the amount you can increase your house size by, so maybe we should stick to that. To be honest, I haven't actually made my mind up yet. I might support Councillor Ellis, I might go with it, I'm not sure.
Councillor Lawrence.
Kate, if I could just respond to the two questions raised by councillor Hope. So in terms of the responsibility for ensuring that development is constructed in accordance with the approved plans, that rests with the applicant, rests firmly with the applicant and not the Borough Council.
But can I ask, before you go on, can I ask, do we, you know, because I can remember I got, when I did my extension, I got a little pack of papers and tear off things and I had to ring the Borough Council and they came and checked and I gave them it and they said, yeah, that's right, and we carried on. There was a system of checking and I couldn't move on until my foundations had been checked and I couldn't move on until my JCP, what's it called, in the ceiling. And I'm assuming now that what you're saying is, no, we're not going to do any of that checking, we're not going to make sure you're complying with the rules, we're just going to make it your responsibility. So if we're doing that, what comeback have we got? Have we been to this chap and said, no, your dormer window is in the wrong place, pull the bloody thing down and put it in the right place?
To councillor Hope.
That we're encouraging people to ease things along and do it the way they want to do it and I think that is a problem.
So what you're referring to, in terms of those checks to make sure that development is undertaken to the required standards, there is different legislation, so there's a building regulations. So at Gedling Borough Council, we operate a building control service, but applicant, well, developers are at liberty to use an approved inspector, so a private sector business to provide approval of building regulations. So I think what you're referring to when you've had an extension constructed to your property, yes, the building inspector, whether it's Gedling Borough Council or an approved inspector will check construction work at various stages, so that is a separate process. In terms of planning enforcement, within the resources that we have available, we do undertake some monitoring and the planning case officers do undertake some monitoring so far as practically possible within the, you know, the resources that we have available. To come back to you in terms of your question, you know, you asked the question, are we punishing the applicant for planning permission here? Absolutely not. We're considering this planning application, so the officer recommendation and the report before mentioned assesses the application in light of the development plan policies that we have enforced at a certain time and national policies as well.
Okay, now I'll accept that, thanks very much.
Councillor Lawrence.
I should be supporting the officer's recommendation and I wholeheartedly agree with councillor Barnfather.
Councillor Paling.
I think I am going to be supporting David Ellis in what he said. I definitely agree. To me, to have this case openly partially available is in itself a tragedy and I think the dormer windows will not increase on the view, will not tell that there is an increase in the upprint of the house in the, from the, just having the dormer windows. In fact, I personally think that they will look better than the skylights. However, you said something about, I don't know whether it was a deferment to what you mentioned, but there was something in your introduction that suggested we might not go to the bird, but we might do something different. Can I ask what that was?
Sorry, councillor Paling, was that a question to me?
Oh, sorry, yes.
I'm very sorry, but you've been breaking up, so could you repeat that, please?
My understanding was at the beginning, you said there was something in the applicant consent letter saying if we were going to review, could it be deferred? Was that the word?
Yeah, I picked up what you've said now, councillor Paling, thank you very much. So the final bullet point, so what I did in the introduction is I summarised an additional letter which has been provided by the applicant. So the final point which the applicant made was that the committee should approve the application or allow further dialogue with the planning department as the concerns raised are unwarranted.
Is that, do we move a deferral to allow that to happen?
No.
How do we, how do we vote for that? How do we, how do we vote for that?
We, we have to vote on what's in front of us.
So why have we had the letter read out?
Because all, all submissions must be read out, must be presented to the committee.
I would, in, in introducing any application where, where we have a late item of information, um, if we receive application, um, information which is made, which is provided further to the publication of the report, normally what I would do, or, or any officer within the service who's presenting an application, we would, um, presee, um, the additional information and bring that to the attention of members.
I still think I'm in favour of the dormer windows.
councillor Parr.
Thank you. I have no additional comment to make to what's already been made, but, uh, support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
councillor Scroggy.
Yeah, I've got a question, if that's all right. Um, I don't know whether it's for the officer or the solicitor. I'm mindful of what councillor David Ellis said and what councillor Barnfather said. The question I would, uh, ask is, if we were to go against the officer's recommendation, would we be setting a precedent for other developments in the green belt to go over? Maybe that's something the solicitor can, uh, answer or the officer maybe.
I'm, I'm happy to answer this question. Um, each, each application is considered, um, on the basis of its own merits. So it doesn't, it doesn't set a, it doesn't set a precedent, um, because each application is judged on the basis of its own merits, having regard to all of the material planning considerations, um, at the time. I don't know if Mrs. Pragon would wish to, um, add, add any further comments.
Um, no, councillor Scroggy, I support the comments that have been made by, um, Mike Avery. We have to consider every planning application, um, on the information that you have presented in respect of that application and it would be considered on its own merits.
Come on, John. Okay, Kate.
Okay, thank you. councillor Wheeler.
No further comments to make, thank you.
councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Kate. Um, I find myself in the, uh, the unusual position of, uh, of, of agreeing with, uh, councillor Barnfather always worth the word. Don't get used to it, Chris. I'm not sure it's going to happen ever so often. But, um, yeah, I mean, I don't think I could have put it, uh, any better. The, um, the proposals are, are clearly going to be prominent and, and I'm really struggling to see how trees are going to mask it. They're going to have to be pretty, pretty substantial to, uh, um, to, to do that. We have a policy, we have a limit, uh, on the, uh, um, the increase in, in floor space. And this goes significantly, um, uh, over that. It does feel like mission creep, um, to me. And I will be supporting the, uh, the officer's recommendations.
councillor McCrossan.
Yes, support the officer's recommendation and no further comment. Thank you.
councillor Truscott.
Yeah, um, I agree with the officer's recommendation. I object to the development of three dormer windows. And though they're on the side of the building, they're extremely prominent as you drive or walk down Lambley Lane. Because this is the first house that you see. And I don't agree with the argument that they are no more intrusive or visually prominent than roof lights. You know, I don't understand that argument at all. So I'd completely agree with the conclusions of the planning officer, that they are unduly prominent and represent an inappropriate development in the green belt. And therefore should be refused planning permission.
Okay, would anybody else like to come back?
Yes, please.
And was that councillor Rachel Ellis?
It was, and someone else, I believe.
Yeah, councillor Barnfather.
Shall I, um, shall I go first councillor Barnfather?
Yes, please, Rachel.
Thank you. Um, I've been listening with interest to the debate, um, because I've been weighing it up in my own mind. Uh, and, um, the issue that's exercising me at the moment, and I understand the, uh, the issue, you know, the comments made on, in both ways, um, is that this man had planning permission, well, whatever else he didn't have, to develop his, uh, roof space. And as part of that, presumably he had permission to put in flooring and he had permission to put in the roof lights. So what we're not, we're dealing with is not an extension of floor space per se, but an extension of usable floor space. The actual building is not in itself going to get much, well, not going to get much bigger. What's going to happen is that the roof lights are going to be converted into, uh, dormer windows. Now, I happen to agree with councillor Paling that, uh, actually I think the dormer windows would improve the look of the building rather than be a detriment. But I, I'm interested because I don't see, um, that although it extends the usable floor space, it, it doesn't increase the actual floor space one bit. And that's, that's what's exercising my mind on this particular case.
councillor Barnfather.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back, Chair. I listened to councillor Hope with some incredulity, I'll be perfectly honest. It's the council's fault that the developer on behalf of the applicant didn't build the building right in the first place. That's like making the council the building police. Well,
I said they didn't.
If I may finish, if I may finish, using that analogy then, when a person goes out and commits a crime, in future will arrest the chief constable rather than the offender. Complete nut and nonsense. The reality of it is that the, this, this application, and it's very clearly worded in the conclusion and in the recommendation, will cumulatively result in a disproportionate addition to the dwelling that would represent inappropriate development within the green belt. Stop, full stop.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I have some feedback from officers about this issue of floor space versus usable floor space?
Can I come in?
No.
Yes, councillor Ellis, I, I can come back, um, in terms of, um, floor space. The policy, or policy LPT thirteen is, um, is clear, that's referring to, uh, floor space. These proposals would increase the usable floor space. And the only way that that usable floor space can be, um, you know, increased further is by the construction of these extensions to, um, the roof. You know, which would have, you know, in my view, an, an adverse impact upon the openness of the green belt. So I think that the policy, um, position is, is, is clearly set out in the report. Um, and as I, as I summarised, um, at the, at the outset, when, when I introduced the application.
Yeah, can I speak?
Do you have a, do you, are you coming back on, on what councillor Barnfather said?
Well, partly, but partly in general. Can I speak?
Yeah, okay, but you know, can you, you've had, you know, you've, you've come in twice already. Can you keep it brief?
I haven't spoken twice already, I've spoken once, but I'll speak again. It's, it's a very quick one. Look, we give people planning permission to do something. We've seen the plans, we've seen what they intend to do. And we've seen where they're going to put whatever they're going to put. What do we do about checking that it's in the right place? Listening, listening to the officer, um, the implication is, well, they can ask us to keep a check on it. But
I don't, I don't see that this
Hang on, let, let me finish. But if they don't want to, they can employ somebody else to keep a check on it. And if that, if they put it in the wrong place and that other person says, no, it's fine, is there nothing we can do about it? Um, it, it seems to me that, that planning authorities have lost a lot of control. I'll stop there.
Yeah, thank you very much. I don't actually think that's relevant to this agenda.
I think it is. I think it is.
No, I don't think it is.
Good for you.
Okay, has everybody spoken, Kate?
Everybody has spoken and those that wish to come back have spoken also.
Okay, thank you. So we have the recommendation on page eighty nine, which is to refuse planning permission for the reasons listed in the paragraph below. So as Kate goes through the list alphabetically, if you say yes, that means you are agreeing with the recommendation, which is to refuse planning permission.
Thank you. councillor Adams.
Very much for, Kate, thank you.
councillor Barnes.
For.
councillor Barnfather.
For.
councillor David Ellis.
Against.
councillor Rachel Ellis. Against. councillor Elwood.
For.
councillor Hope.
Abstain.
councillor Lawrence.
For.
councillor Paling.
Against.
councillor Parr.
For.
councillor Scroggy.
For.
councillor Wheeler.
For.
councillor Wilkinson.
For.
councillor McCrossan. councillor McCrossan. Thank you. councillor Truscott.
For.
Thank you. That was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. That, uh, planning application has been refused. We can go on now to, um, the next item on the agenda. If I can find it. Which is a tree preservation order. Oh, one, three, oh, three hundred and eighty-three, Mappy Plains, seven oak trees. We've got all that in front of you, nobody, um, is anybody going to speak to that one?
Move, we take the vote.
Yeah, nope. Okay, um, so we have the proposal, page number ninety-two.
Through.
Through tree preservation order. To confirm without notification. Is there any debate on this? Anybody want to speak? No?
Hello, Chair, yeah, hello. councillor Wheeler.
councillor Wheeler wishes to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say that these trees are absolutely fantastic. You can come across these trees at Copse, Copse Road. They, they are beautiful trees. Uh, they, they, um, throughout the year give, uh, give a lot of joy to local residents when they walk up to the top of Mappy Plains and love that area along the ridge line there. Absolutely fantastic trees. So I'm really pleased to see these here today to be given a tree protection order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are we going to run through a list to, uh, to vote on this?
Was this moved, Chair? Seconded?
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I formally move.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so to the vote. councillor Adams.
For.
councillor Barnes.
For.
councillor Barnfather.
For.
councillor David Ellis.
For.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
For.
councillor Elwood.
For.
councillor Hope.
For.
councillor Lawrence.
For.
councillor Paling.
For.
councillor Parr.
For.
councillor Scroggy.
For.
councillor Wheeler. councillor Wheeler.
For. For.
councillor Wilkinson.
For.
councillor McCrossan.
For.
councillor Truscott.
For.
Thank you. That was carried.
Okay, thanks very much. Agenda item ten is another TPO. One broad first close Woodborough, uh, one cedar tree. I formally move.
Seconded.
Okay, would anybody like to speak on that?
Go to a vote.
Go to the vote then. The recommendation is to confirm the TPO.
councillor Adams.
For.
councillor Barnes.
For.
councillor Barnfather.
For.
councillor David Ellis.
For.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
For.
councillor Elwood.
For.
councillor Hope.
For.
councillor Lawrence.
For.
councillor Paling.
For.
councillor Parr.
For.
councillor Scroggy.
For.
councillor Wheeler.
For.
councillor Wilkinson.
For, and apologies for missing the formal seconding. You caught me on the hop there. I wasn't expecting quite so quickly.
councillor McCrossan.
For.
And councillor Truscott.
For.
Thank you. That was carried.
Okay, that TPO is confirmed. Item eleven on the agenda, TPO, uh, one four seven, one five three Coronation Walk. Protection of three English oaks, one Scots pine and one common ash. I'll formally move.
And I'll formally second.
Anybody want to comment on that one?
Yes, please, Chair.
Okay, if you do so.
councillor Adams.
Thank you, Kate. Yes, um, just really to, uh, say I'm really happy to see this here. The, um, Coronation Walk, uh, houses, houses have a fantastic, uh, line behind them of native trees. And I'm over the moon to see another five of these protected. Um, I want to ensure that all the wildlife corridors across, uh, Getling where possible are protected, not only for the wellbeing of residents, but obviously for the wildlife, um, for now and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Okay, recommendation is to confirm the TPO. Would you like to, um, take the vote?
councillor Adams.
For.
councillor Barnes.
For.
councillor Barnfather.
For.
councillor David Ellis.
For.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
For.
councillor Elwood.
For.
councillor Hope.
For.
councillor Lawrence.
For.
councillor Paling.
For.
councillor Parr.
For.
councillor Scroggy.
For.
councillor Wheeler.
For.
councillor Wilkinson.
For.
councillor McCrossan.
For.
councillor Truscott.
For.
Thank you. That was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on then to item twelve on the agenda, which is an appeal decision. Land adjacent to a Myrtle Grove, appeal dismissed. Noted. Item thirteen, appeal decision, A Barn, Link Farm, Ricket Lane, Bledeth. Appeal dismissed, to be noted. Item fourteen, appeal decision, application number, appeal B Barn D Link Farm, Ricket Lane, Bledeth. Appeal dismissed. Yep. Then on to, um, agenda item fifteen, which is planning delegation panel action sheets. Fifth of June, page one oh nine. Twelfth of June, page one eleven. Nineteenth of June, page one one three. Twenty-sixth of June, page one one seven.
Twenty-sixth of June, page one and seven. Thirtieth, tenth of July, page one and nine. Seventeenth of July, page one two one. Twenty-fourth of July, one two five. Okay, agenda item sixteen, future applications. Any comments or questions? Agenda item seventeen, any other items the Chair considers urgent? I don't have any. So it just remains to bring the meeting to a close. Thank you all for attending and have a safe journey home.